The zoom as well as the wind cam. If you do not wish to have your likeness or your voice recorded, please turn off your video and turn off your audio. Or turn off your microphone. So why don't we do a roll call vote so that we are legal? Kurt Spring.
Here, present.
Eeching Scott.
Present.
Nick Rosetos.
Here.
Sally Dale.
Present.
And Diab Jerius is present as well. Why I speak myself in the third person? I don't know. We also have with us Nancy Polkari, our recording secretary. Brian Zekely, our town planner, and we will be hearing from Brian Mantur, assistant town engineer. So why don't we jump right into our agenda? We have opening need, we're gonna have a few updates. We're gonna go through a few planning board minutes and approve them. We have three special permits, so we won't be looking at fifteen Tufts Road this evening. That's been continued. We're gonna have a discussion on revising the rules for site plan review waivers. There'll be a brief presentation from the tree working group to update the planning board about what the working groups been doing. And then we will adjourn. So Brian, do you want to start with any of your updates?
Sure, I'll start first with, I had a meeting with the coordinator at M A P C for the North Suburban Planning Council, which is our subregion of M A P C. M A P C governs, or not governs, but works in the hundred and one cities and towns around the Boston metro area. We are, and we are in that M A P C region, and our subregion is called NSPC, North Suburban. And there's one of the main chair Alex Copelman. He's going out on family leave and there's going to be a, like an interim person, so I was meeting that, but I was learning about trying to figure out, you know, was there any clue from the state about when exactly the three A, the M B T A zoning final guidelines will be issued? And there was a lot of conversation about that, and basically everyone is anxiously awaiting and we're, it seems like it's going to be in the late fall. But it's a guess, it's a guess. So I think realistically, it's more like before the new year, which doesn't really, you know, I think when we're looking to the G B D two and three, that's what I'm, you know, so that's something that we need to, you know, talk about as it develops. Right now, it's a hurry up and wait with that, which was a little unfortunate, so I, that's news. What else? The other update is that the Washington and Swanton R F P, the timeline was, was up for applications and the town received one application by a previous developer of the site that was in works to do a friendly four to be with the town. It was Brian Malanson on Malanson Development. He is going to be interviewed by the select board on the fifteenth, and I believe, Diab, you should have gotten a correspondence from acting town manager related to comments about that proposal, Diab?
It's possible, but I don't recall seeing it.
Okay, so it's possible also that it hasn't gone on. I know that's like imminent about collecting comments, thoughts, suggestions from boards and committees about the proposal. But there will be an interview next Monday. I believe that's the fifteenth.
Yep.
Yep, that's right. So, and that's all the updates I have at the moment.
Okay, so.
Can I just add one thing to that? Um, Brian, I did, I happened to just be looking at agendas and I noticed that the select board was gonna be interviewing Malanson about Washington Swanton, and I found the plans on the select board's website, and I thought anybody who wanted to go look at them would be glad to know that they are there. I was very curious. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
One thing, Brian, can you update us on North Main and Forman Place? How they took the.
Sorry about that. Yeah, yeah. So last week I was supposed to be last week I was supposed to be fully back, but wasn't, so I had to postpone a meeting with Forman Place. But we had basically, or the board had basically given the directive to come up with a scope that would encompass a thirty thousand dollar contract. And they had said that they were gonna follow up with me, which they did. I have yet, I have reviewed the scope and I think it's, it's exactly what the board was looking for, or nearly. It has been, I have not sent that to the board for review, didn't get on this agenda. But you, the board technically did authorize the a thirty thousand dollars scope. And eventually Diab would have to sign. So that will go back to the board, but that has progressed. Holton Street, since it's only fifteen thousand, I have not engaged Josh at the moment, because I, I think I well wanna be targeted with, with that money in terms of when we're going to be using it and spending it. So I think I need to talk to Josh about a timeline. But not so eager to spend that money, just as the fiscal year just started.
And of course, we're calling that Holton Cross and Swanton.
Sorry, yes, well, really the I L is, is, but, but yes, all of that, as in, we are looking at the entire zoning district of the light industrial zoning district, which incorporates Holton Street, Swanton, and Cross.
So.
Yeah, back to you, Diab.
Yeah, I was gonna say the other minor update is Josh reached out to us and I think to one of our residents who's actually on the, on the call with us this evening, Rich Rohan, looking, trying to get further outreach in the neighborhood. And Brian and I are going to be looking at which neighborhoods we could send postcards or something out to, to, to get more input. I think Josh was, was finding it difficult to get more input, so Brian and I will be doing that tomorrow. The other thing, really quick update, is that the select board has put out a list of possible fall twenty twenty-two town meeting warrant articles. One of them is an A D U article. There is, I don't know the there is a good sense that the select board will actually be submitting such an article. The board seems to have not made up its mind. So how this fits in with the A D U working groups plan for getting such an article in front of town meeting in spring of next year? That's a discussion that the A D U working group will have. I know when we came before this board in late July, we talked about a fall or a spring of twenty twenty-three time to bring that article forward. So I wasn't at the A D U working group last Friday, so I can't report on that discussion, but I have reached out to the, the chair of the select board and a couple of other members to try to understand what the aim of the select board is in this, and we will, it's still unknown. Chair is off on vacation, of course, because it's August and everyone goes on vacation in August, so this will take a few go around. Sally?
I was at the A D U meeting last Friday, and there was only three of us there, so it was a very short meeting. And the general consensus was that we would, that the A D U working group would discuss in being in general supportive of whatever the select board chooses to bring forward, listening closely before and during town meeting for whatever concerns arise, and if it doesn't pass at town meeting, because of those concerns, we would commit to addressing them in the ensuing months leading up to spring.
Yeah, that's, that's good to know. I think, you know, there are, I don't know, five or six members on that working group, so trying to get everyone together and figure out what's going on, since we do have a plan moving forward. Education plan moving forward for the fall, so we'll figure something out, I hope. We are gonna have another meeting this week, I hope, we'll be discussing some of the concerns that we have with the with the warrant article that was put forward by the select board member, Michael Bettencourt. I don't wanna call it the select board article, because the select board hasn't actually adopted it as their own. I know he's the, he's the the party who's bringing it forward. I'm missing the word. I wanna say protagonist, but this isn't the movie or a book, so he's, there's another word. Proponent, yes, it was a pro something.
Ding 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 ding.
Yes, okay, this is, it's like Hollywood Squares, a new one. Okay, so let's move on to meeting minutes. Brian, if you could pop them up, I, there are, we have three to go through this evening. Okay, so our first is we had essentially, we had actual two meetings on June twenty-eighth. And we have combined minutes for those two meetings. Are there any comments or concerns on the June twenty-eighth meetings? Sally, go ahead.
On the first page, the third and fourth bullets, where it says also on the town website, I would add on the planning board page, because finding things on the town website can sometimes be difficult. So giving a little bit more instruction there. And then Brian, I wanted to let you know that for the fourth bullet, the presentation includes visual images, that link is not working. And then on the second page, I just wanted to point out to Nancy that the first bullet is a repeat of text, no, excuse me, under Mr. Fiala. Isn't it Fiola? Fiala, whatever, of the first, the first bullet was, is a repeat of earlier texts. And on the third bullet, under Mr. Fiala, at the end of the first line, it should say social services. The two highest types of businesses are healthcare slash social services. And then on page three, under discussion, towards the end of the page, the second to the third, second to the, well, it's under discussion, it's the third to last bullet. It says Holton Street is one of the underutilized areas identified, and I wanna be specific and say identified in the twenty thirty master plan. And then I had a question about the last bullet under discussion, which is to ask, who will be also looking at what legal limitations exist regarding this issue? Who is doing that?
I think we would be asking.
That would, that would be legal counsel.
So is the planning board asking legal to?
The planning will be. I don't think the planning board has yet.
Will, yeah, okay, I get, I get it. And then that was all I had for that one. Sorry.
Thank you. Any other, any other comments?
Yeah, I do. So mine is more for just the first paragraph, and for gonna start calling it the Holton Cross Swanton study, I think we should do it as early as possible, because I, I do think that Holton Street is kind of a mysterious street to most people. Cross Street is really north, but Swanton is much more familiar to people, and I think that would start to get better P R for it and get more interest in this study. So if we are gonna do it, we should just do it now.
Okay.
I think that's a great point, Eeching.
Yeah, and so that should be changed in that as well as on the first bullet.
So it would be called the Holton Cross Swanton Street Visioning?
Yes.
Okay.
And if we really wanna confuse people, we'll put that L I after it, and people will wonder what the L I is. No, it's I L, I'm sorry, I didn't get it backwards.
Industrial Light, right?
Industrial Life, I think they're French.
Bud?
This is just another small thing where Sally had the part where it said grandfathered, it's just a very outdated term. That's the current term, which is what, pre-existing?
Pre-existing, non-conforming.
Non-conforming.
Okay, so having, so having it, so grandfather's not the word.
Where is it?
It's on the, it's on page three in the last bullet.
Oh, yes, having it grandfathered, so having it.
I mean, pre-existing non-conforming doesn't import, doesn't, I think, give the impression that the use will continue.
It's, it's having pre-existing non-conforming conditions.
Is, is there a new word?
Protection, protection, yeah, it's, it's protection. It's really just protections. It's protections for pre-existing uses.
Okay, so.
Having protections for pre-existing uses.
Yeah, so if I could ask Sally and Eeching to pass those edits on.
Okay, we could use exempted, excused, pre-approved, pre-authorized, or legacyed.
It's just a historic kind of a negative visualized term.
Right, according to practical ease, legacy.
It's more of an urban planning ish, issue where it's, has historic racist implications to it.
Right, so I think Nick is trying to come up with an alternate term.
According to prac, practical ease, you could use legacyed, exempted, excused, pre-approved, pre-authorized. And then it says, as Maya Angelou so gratefully said, do the best you can until you know better. Then when you know better, do better. So let's, uh, follow that.
Let's choose one of those words and, so.
Eeching, I defer to you.
All right, got it.
Okay, and are there any other edits? If not, then could I please have a motion to accept, approve the minutes of the planning board on June twenty-eighth, for the meetings on June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second? Excellent. Roll call vote, please. Sally Dale?
Aye.
Nick Rosetos?
Aye.
Eeching Scott?
Aye.
Kurt Spring?
Aye.
And I, Steve Jerius' I as well. Thank you very much. Let's move on to the next one, please. And that is Tuesday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Are there any comments or edits on this one?
I had an edit on the first page, under where it says Chair Le Menage. And it's just the last sentence of that paragraph, where the last line says, until they want to make changes to their new historic homes, and I wanna say newly acquired.
Ah, yes. I think that's a good that's a great edit.
Okay, good. And then, I didn't, I had a question on page two, under Chair Jerius, discussion topic three, suggestion to have E permitting, and I simply made a note that I wanted clarification about that.
Okay, so E permitting, I believe it's actually already in use, but E permitting is essentially the filing of permits through an electronic system, that's what the E stands for, versus the previous practice of doing everything with paper.
So you've, it's E, it's E, it's E permitting application, it's electronic application is what you're doing, right?
Yes.
Right, okay, I get it. Thank you. And then on page four, we're under Mr. Zekely, and then there are planning board discussions, and then there are bullets, and the last bullet suggests.
There is, there is no page four.
There's no page four?
Are you on, this is.
July twelfth, yes, there is a page four on July twelfth.
Oh, sorry, I'm on.
It's, it's item number C, petition three nine seven oh for seventy-two Hutchinson Road.
Sorry, I was on the wrong one, here I am.
No, that's okay, I do it all the time. Under Mr. Zekely, and then under planning board discussion, and then last bullet. Suggestion to add this to the list for updating the zoning bylaws. I just wanted to make, to make a point or note to come back to that, that we're very clear about what we're adding to the list for updating, because I wasn't sure I was clear based on the discussion.
I, I had a note about that too, and I thought it was about Diab's concern that the zoning doesn't allow for boarding in that area. Is that right, Diab? Because I, I wanted to add that too, because that point was very important. And I don't think it was captured in the notes.
I, 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 yes, I believe that's what we, I certainly was concerned that we were that the zoning was, we were shoehorning something into the zoning, which we could do a better job, so. So I guess the question, the, the, the change that to suggestion to, I would say, review shoot, my pen's not working, to review the uh, we don't wanna call it boarding, because boarding is a very specific thing.
Residential use?
It's rooming, actually. It's not boarding. It's, 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 it's providing residential use in in.
In S C I district.
Yeah, and it, it would be essentially, oh, shoot, yeah, what's a good?
Well, so it's suggestion to add to the list for updating the zoning bylaws, a consideration of exemption in S C I district with special permit to permit.
That, that is how this is being.
Seasonal housing, what, Brian?
I'm sorry, so that is how this is being done currently, me, me, meaning that this was a special permit that's being modified, that's why they're back there, like.
Just if we have to change, do we have to change anything? I mean, otherwise we would be permitting seasonal housing in all S C I.
Well, this is, I think the, the question is to review the, the uh, I'm trying to.
I would just say suggestion to add to review this, to review this for up, for potentially updating the zoning bylaw.
Well, that's what it says, but it doesn't say what we're gonna update it for.
I mean, it.
I think it's to, to, to review the zoning bylaws to change to.
Are we wanting to consider as of right, rooming in S C I?
No, I think what I would prefer is that if you're gonna, that it should be listed under something which you can get a special permit for, but it shouldn't be in the use table. Currently, it's not in the use table, so they got the special permit, but it's, it's essentially outside of the use table.
Okay, so that I can make a note of.
Yeah, so I think it would be to, to, the concept of adding residential as a special permit use in the use table.
In S C I?
In S C I.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, we might, yeah, we might actually also consider what happens in, in light industrial as well, if you wanna, I mean, I don't think, I don't know if that's available there as well.
I'm sorry, Diab, what did you see? My phone just jumped, maybe jumped.
We're just reviewing the notes right now, right? And so we're, we're talking about.
So I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't limit it to S C I, I would just simply just review in all zones, because, because we might wanna be able to put in some sort of residential in light industrial, if it makes sense with the, with the development.
Yeah, like say you had an artist loft.
Yeah, or something like that, so that, that would be.
Okay, and then, can I go on with my comments?
Yes, please.
Okay, so top of page five, where it says on the second line, one youth, it should say one youth seat, followed by the process to select the youth member.
Okay, yep.
And then I had a question, what does the last minute bullet mean? Also need a framework for future P B discussion.
I think it was, this was to, to come, to come up with the, the first to come up with an agenda for that first meeting with the M P I C. It's a framework for that discussion, that first discussion, so you know, so it's not just a free-flowing.
So the first P B discussion with the M P I C?
Correct.
Okay, good. And then when we get to the discussion of the site plan waiver, I was hoping, Eeching, that you could re-present your analysis of using the F A R.
Yep, we can, we can.
I wasn't fresh in my mind.
So let, let's, let's just, when we get to that, yeah.
That's all I had on this minutes.
Okay, any other one, any other comments on this? If not, then I would appreciate someone making a motion to approve planning board minutes for July twelfth, twenty twenty-two, as amended?
So moved.
And second, please?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please. Nick Rosetos? You are still muted.
You're on mute, Nick.
Aye.
Thank you. Kurt?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Eeching?
Aye.
And Diab Jerius' I as well. Okay, one last set of minutes, which are for July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. And Kurt doesn't get to vote on this one, unfortunately. Yes.
I'll go first, mine are quick.
Okay, go.
All right, so section two, again, the Holton Swanton Cross Streets, I, I think we should add the, the, the three streets. Okay, and then section three, in our discussion with the Chamber of Commerce, I thought this point that, I, I feel like I, I I noticed it, because I, I wanted to emphasize it, was, is that we were trying to figure out what we had in common with the chamber and, and the P B, and the point was, the chamber represents existing businesses and with current and really short-term future survival or, or thriving, whereas the P B projects a big picture, sort of decades of infrastructure and, you know, future businesses that don't even exist yet. So that, that separation was really key to how we work in the chamber, and I, I don't think that that was one of the points made.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, thank you for, yeah, that was, there was a key point you brought up, is that we kind of have different viewpoints on our timeline, so yeah. If you, if you have the language that would, please. And did you have any other comments?
That was it.
Okay, anyone else? Sally?
I have, in the same section three, discussion with Chamber of Commerce, Chamber, under Chair Jerius, the, the second to last question, how does the chamber envision placemaking? I just wanted to change it from vision to envision. And then on the third bullet below, where it says discussion, I wouldn't say that Winchester is unique with the one-of-a-kind retailers. I would say that Winchester has many one-of-a-kind retailers. It's not a unique thing to our town. It's just a good thing. Right?
Yeah, is it, is it I don't recall the discussion where that came up, where we're trying to say that Winchester uniquely, in, in the sense, is it uniquely one-of-a-kind real, in that we don't we only have one-of-a-kind retailers?
No, we don't, because we have like, we, we have a chain store like C V S, so it's just that we have many one-of-a-kind retailers, and that is an appealing characteristic to any community.
Okay, so I, 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 is, does any, I think that's an okay edit. Anyone have a comment on that edit?
It seems reasonable to me.
Okay.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. I was gonna say, we have many one-of-a-kind retailers that poses. That poses advantages and it also poses challenges, but I think just making a fa- statement of fact is what we wanna have.
And at the top of page three, where it says the planning board added. So um, and it says and create quote fifteen minute neighborhoods unquote, where a resident could walk fifteen minutes. And it says for food, restaurants, shopping. I would just say for food and other necessities. Cause I'm not, I'm not advocating that there be restaurants within fifteen minutes of every neighborhood. I was the one that brought up this fifteen minute neighborhood. Concept, master urban or town planning concept.
Okay, I I don't.
I recall that um.
Thing that we have restaurants within fifteen minutes of every neighborhood. It just seemed like a major.
Okay, that that's fine by me.
So food and other necessities. Um, and then that's all I have.
Okay, um, so uh, I would welcome. The motion to approve the minutes for the planning board meeting on Tuesday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty two, as amended.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second. Uh, go go ahead, Nick. You haven't seconded.
Okay, and then uh, roll call vote. Uh, Nick?
Aye.
E Ching?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Kurt, do you wanna officially abstain?
Abstain.
Thank you. D E B says aye as well, and uh, just a reminder, if you could all send your edits to Nancy, that would be greatly appreciated. Okay, now we are on to uh, our ZB A petitions. And our first one is uh, for eleven Mystic Avenue. And um. E Ching, you were going to recuse yourself?
I'm just gonna recuse myself.
Okay, if you could um, we will push you off into the waiting room.
Okay.
And then Brian will let you back in when we're done. Thank you. Um, okay, so. Brian, I don't know if you had a chance to do your normal review just today for this. Did you wanna lead us off?
Um, sure, um, so this is a little bit different this week based upon uh, last week's uh, personal schedule. Um, but uh, basically uh, uh, this is uh. Uh, an enclosure uh, of a patio. Um, and um, and uh, I did not do a full the the full analysis, but I did review the plans. Um, and I had no um, adverse um, impact on the on the neighbor or or the neighborhood. Um, I think I can uh, I'd um, end it actually off to Brian Mantor and engineering to quickly talk about the um, engineering. Uh, dr- sorry, the drainage uh, and we can go from there, but I had no um, I had no issues with the proposed design.
Okay, um, I should say, actually, we should have started saying this was ZB A petition three nine seven two. Um, and the key point, the reason why it's coming for a special permit is that. Uh, they were constructing addition located closer to another, to another building. Then permitted as of right, which was s- sort of an odd thing. Um, because um. I'm not, it's I bel- I believe it's because it would be closer to the garage.
Yeah, it's 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 this whole thing that if a garage is detached from a house. It has to be fifteen or more feet away.
Is this not what we dealt with on on Waukot too?
Yeah, this is, so this is a remnant in the zoning bylaw that was you, you know, you had to fit this huge fire truck to get through there, but now there's. Pressurized hoses, these things are great and they can go everywhere. So usually the fire department or or the fire department doesn't doesn't particularly. Mind this, um, and they would have, they would have, uh, they would view all these petitions as well if they were. Concerned, but that is something we do need to deal with in the zoning bylaw, but that is the. Reason or the ma- one of the major reasons why why that was uh, there uh, the, yeah.
And we should definitely deal with it, uh, but I'm sorry to cut you off, Brian Mantor. Where are you, Brian?
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Oh, there you are. Hi.
Um, yes, so there, the application, they have a net increase of impervious surface of a hundred and seventy six square feet. Um, so that's below the change, right, the threshold to require stormwater management. The applicant does propose to install a two call tech unit system to accept the runoff from the addition. Um, I just wanna let the applicants know and the plan board know that they're not required to. Have any stormwater management um. Uh, to address their, to for their for their projects, and um, there's no other civil. Civil work on uh, as proposed, so the engineering department has um, no further comment.
Okay, um, are there any uh, comments from the board? Uh, Sally?
Uh, yeah, I looked really closely through this whole package, and I like what they came up with, although. Um, when I was reading design review committee comments about the um. I guess it's the uh, the width of the back addition and um. You know, the 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 pitch of the roof and the width of the addition, I could see what they were talking about, that it seems like it was. Not as um, just elegantly proportioned and pitched. As the other parts of the house, and so I would um. Agree, as much as I understood their comments, I would agree with them, but other than that. I thought they did a really nice job of of expanding their house in a sensitive way that wasn't impactful to the street.
I I just, I I had a couple of comments, uh, I guess independently of the design review board. Uh, and I don't wish to sort of, sort of beat up the applicants. On account of budgetary concerns and I, you know, I approve, you know, I, as far as the addition, I would support it, but I think. Looking at the proposed south elevation uh, and the proposed west, or both the sides, it's a missed opportunity. To number one, extend the roof line. Uh, have the pitch of the rear elevation uh, match the the house. It's a very elegant house. There's a drawing, uh, and it seems like there are so many missed opportunities here. To uh, uh, you know, just in terms of of maintaining the. L double L design, where where this pitch is is uh, it's a very prominent feature. Of this period, uh, so. I mean. I I a- and again, I don't know how much um, that would have added to the cost and therefore um. You know, uh, but that, let me just leave the comment at that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, are there any other comments from the board?
I guess my only comment, I guess maybe in just in response to that, when I'm looking at this proposed south elevation. You sort of see the peak of the front L, which doesn't wa- which is not aligned with the back. So I I'm just not sure they could have successfully done what's being described, Nick. I I don't, I don't think they would have lined up, I guess, just probably given that they couldn't worsen the non-conformity closer to the garage.
Okay.
I don't know, that's.
It looked like a tough situation. I mean, I mean, from the elevations, it looks like a jumble of lines. But uh, I'm gonna defer to to Kurt. Uh, being in the in the profession, I.
Yeah, I don't, I don't claim to be. A residential architect, but yeah, no, I I hear what you're saying. Um, I I had no other comments, though. I mean, we're not worsening.
No, and and I think I I I want to agree with Sally and and support it overall.
Okay, uh, are there any other comments? Um, then I I, my two bits is. Um, I am a little concerned about the massing of the back, but I note that. Um, I don't, there certainly isn't a neighbor behind them to be concerned about that. It looks like the property line goes a long ways away, if I understand that, but. Um, and I think the the garage does shield uh, number four Manchester from that. Um, I, there's a terrific um, gradient out the back. Um, so that does make things, it turns buildings into three-story buildings, whether you like it or not, but that's always a concern of mine. Um, but I don't, I I I don't have any other um, concerns on this, other than we should really do something about that. Fifteen foot to the nearest building thing in the zoning bylaw. Um. If the board is willing to, is there a motion the board would like, someone on the board would like to make uh? Endorsing favorable action on this?
I I would ru- I would move to recommend favorable action.
Okay, is there a second?
I I can second that, but I want to amend it slightly. Is that how, is that how we do that?
Uh, well, it's been seconded. Now we can move to amend.
Um, the only amendment would be to um, acknowledge. Um, concurrents with the design review committee's comments regarding. What is referred to as the elevation that is the um. Just in proposed, the proposed south elevation.
Okay.
So I just, just so I'm clear, does that condition our approval on adhering to their recommendations? Cause I.
No, I would just, it's 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 not a condition, it's we vote favorable action. With um, acknowledging con- concurrence with. The design review committee's recommendations regarding the proposed south elevation. Is that a thing?
Is there a south elevation on there? Um.
Yeah, it's.
The backside. So the thing I note is it says consider. So it's not, it's it's a condition which says. Think about doing it, but we're not gonna make you do it.
And I also saw that the 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 Bledis worked really hard on this issue.
Yeah, so I I I I think um, I, I'm not personally in favor of putting a condition requiring them. Um, I think that.
Okay, I'm cool.
Just, cause I, if we're gonna, if we're gonna concur, we should let. I think design review has come out. I think we could simply state that we also have a concern. And I would be okay with saying we're concerned about the the rear elevation, and we do have a hand up from the proponents here. Uh, do we wanna? Um, before, let's, let's first, before we let you guys in to speak, why don't we first deal with this motion? Um.
I withdraw the motion, D E B.
Okay, well, that makes it easy. Okay, go ahead, um. Why don't you folks turn your, uh, you are now recognized, Allison Congas, the Bleda. I apologize for massacring you last night.
Okay, that's, that's, that's pretty good. Thank you. Um, no, I just wanted to say that we we do plan on taking into consideration some of the um. The recommendations that the design review um, made, especially with kind of the the look and feel of the massing. Um, and 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 we will review the roof line again, I think kind of working with some pitches um. And maybe tying in at least. The the east-west um, pitch to the new addition pitch, if if we can make it work without kind of doing massive structural engineering things. Um, we'll definitely take it into consideration, the windows and the massing, kind of the look and feel of the back. I I certainly don't want to turn this into a. A three-story kind of vinyl. Somerville triple decker, apologies, Somerville.
No, it's it's a beautiful house, and it's in a beautiful location, the heart of the Mystic Valley on Mystic. Avenue.
Yeah, I think, I think the 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 problem with this is that the proportions are very um, kind of skinny and tall in terms of the the volume that you have to play with. And so you you end up with a very, you know, twelve by twelve pitch. If you try to open that. Any wider, obviously your pitch flattens out, and it just, we we did revise, uh, we went through many revisions with with uh, Don Foot and his design team. Um, but there's definitely some, some items that we're, we're going to revisit there.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just want to. Point out that we only have fifteen minutes in this section to deal with two more petitions.
So.
So um, is.
I would, I would second Kurt's motion, so we can vote.
So let us move to a vote, a roll call vote, please. Um, Kurt?
Aye.
Uh, Nick?
Aye.
Uh, Sally?
Aye.
D E B's is aye as well. E Ching is abstain. Um, and so uh, we have a four zero vote for favorable action. Thank you very much. And uh, Brian, if you could uh. Welcome uh, E Ching back to the uh, grownups table.
Isn't it four zero one?
Yes, it's four zero one. Yes, I'm sorry. Um, hi, E Ching. Welcome back. You, uh, let us now move on to the next one, which is uh. Twenty-six Johnson Road. And uh, that one is. Position number three nine seven four. It is uh, before us. So it's be permitted to construct an addition located close to side property line and permitted as of right. Uh, Brian, did you have a recommendation?
Um, uh, I had no adverse effect on a neighbor or the neighborhood and um. Uh, thought that this was a a minor uh, uh, a minor. Petition similar to, uh, we actually happen to have three this this time around that, in my opinion, are rather um. Minor in terms of their impact. Um, and again, I would turn it uh, over to Brian Mantor real quick to talk about um. Uh, the drainage.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Brian Mantor?
So for, for this project, the net previous surface area is. Under five hundred square feet, around two hundred and seventy-one square feet. Um, they propose no other site, civil site work. Um, so therefore, this project is not. Trigger stormwater management review uh, as outlined. In the regulations and the engineering department has no further comment.
Okay, thank you. Um, any comments from the board? Or a motion, if that's, if we already at that point, Sally, go ahead, please.
I have a comment and a motion. My comment is, I think that the addition is a great improvement over the screen porch that you had there.
Thank you.
And I think it's great what you're doing to this house, and I would move that the planning board vote for. Um, favorable action. On, is that what I'm saying? Um.
Do you wanna to, yes.
Sitting a special permit, right, so a special permit, I I would vote for favorable action on their request for a special permit for twenty-six Johnson Road.
I agree, and I would like to second uh, that motion.
Okay, and uh, boy, E Ching, we're following the E Ching rule here. So I'm going straight to the vote, um, E Ching?
Aye.
Uh, Nick?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
And D E B Jarius is aye as well, so we have five zero voting to endorse, to recommend favorable action. Excellent. And uh. Thank you. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Um, and now our last um, ZB A petition of the day. Is for thirty-four Anida Road. And this is ZB A petition three nine seven five. Uh, and there before us, get a special permit to be permitted to construction addition located close to the side property line and permitted as of right. Um, Brian Zakali, any comments?
Um, yeah, this proposed addition is replacing uh, the current uh, back deck. Um, uh, you know, I had no issues uh, at all, uh, uh. Uh, planning or otherwise uh, for this, um, Richard Leaf seems to be coming in on a monthly basis. And uh, producing uh, good work for the neighborhood. Um, so uh, back to Brian Mantor, uh, in drainage.
Okay, Brian Mantor, go ahead, please.
Uh, as opposed, the project has a increased. Purvis surface area of two hundred and eighty-eight square feet. Uh, the applicant does not propose any other site work or civil work. Um, therefore, they do not trigger. The uh, stormwater management um, guidelines. The engineering department has no further comment.
Thank you very much. Uh, are there comments from the board or perhaps a motion?
Quick comment. Um, so I got really confused by one of your color photographs. It's this one. That makes it look like. The deck. Sticks out from the side of the house. It's just the way that, it looks like it's reversed in my screen. I don't know if it is. Um, but when I looked at all the other photos and the and the plot plans and everything, I realized, no, no, the deck is actually. Flush, you can't see. It it was really.
That's a trick of uh, of perspective, it looks like.
Rich, are you talking? Richard? I can't hear you.
Nick is talking.
Oh, I just, it it looks like a trick of 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 perspective to me, but it it does very much look that way.
Right, but I then I figured out what was, that it was just me. And everything's fine, and and my only other comment is that I think the changes are fine.
Okay, uh, any other comments or perhaps a motion?
I would move to recommend favorable action.
Is there, on this is, oh, let's do it.
A second.
This is on petition three nine seven five. Okay, we have.
Right.
And let's go directly to a vote then. Sally?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
E Ching?
Aye.
And D E B says aye as well. Thank you very much. Uh, thanks, Richard, for joining us once more this evening. Um, and now we, uh, having disposed of all those and we are ahead by ten minutes. That is wonderful news. I don't know, we can all take a break now. So now we're going to dive right into once more, discussion of the site plan review waiver. And I'm hoping that we can finalize our discussion this evening in terms of coming up with what we're actually going to do about this. Um, I believe that, um, the last time we met and it was actually in one of the meetings minutes. We were I think we're all very, we were all taken with Yicheng's description of using some sort of an FAR as a trigger. And Brian, I know you prepared a brief summary, which I was hoping, I'm not sure if that included that discussion.
It, it did not include that. Uh, I can, I can certainly, I can bring up basically the few more, uh, either you know, top, you know, as topics of discussion, but I think the, the major part of tonight is really to kind of decide what route we want to take to pursue in terms of, you know, meaning there's a, a couple, a couple of them are, well, are significantly different. One is working with the current, you know, coming up with the new definition now. Another option is to just, it's not working as a waiver to get rid of, rid of the waiver, to really have a, have a final discussion, just to narrow in on what the point, I, I believe for tonight, DM, I want to make sure that, or just want to make sure we're in all agreement, that, 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 um, that's kind of the major point for this evening is to determine which avenue. And we need to then, if we're going to be working with it and coming up with more uh, you know, requirements or, or, you know, to make, to, to well, just to add to it, then that's something that we should pursue. So I don't want to make it seem like we have to finalize this tonight. Does that make sense, DM?
Yeah, yeah, no, I just, I, I would, I would, yeah, I don't think we have to finalize it, but I think we have to agree at least on the things we don't want to do so that we can move on. So what I, I am looking at our June twenty-eighth minutes. One of the things we, so we had maybe it wasn't on the twenty-eighth. So I know
Bottom of page four.
Yeah, it is, but I'm not bottom of page four. Yeah, I'm not seeing the language that that were Yicheng's discussion of the
Oh, no, I did
I can share my screen.
Okay. So I think, so we have so why don't we, why don't we, why don't we try to get rid of a couple of options right away? Uh, the option is that we simply do away with the waiver completely. Because it, it has not made it easier for residents. So one option is we simply remove the possibility of a waiver and leave everything as is.
Well, I would favor keeping that option on the table.
Yeah, we need that option.
I, I, I agree.
Okay, so that was simple. We, we are, we are going to do something. We will
Take out the waiver?
No, no, we are going to keep the waiver.
No, I was saying that option three was to take out the entire waiver and do not allow waivers of take out the entire section and do not allow waivers of any kind. And I would like to leave that discussion on the table.
Can you elaborate on that?
Well, it, it, so, and it's in response to me not feeling favorably about option two.
Wait, you know, I, I mean, can I elaborate? I mean,
Yeah.
Um, we should have one of the options be remove the waiver entirely and don't change anything. Is that
That's what option three is on Brian's memo.
Yeah, that's
Right, that, yeah, that's, that's an option. I mean, that's, that has to be.
And I, and I think that's a viable option if we agree on that.
So the, one of the points that we were making in the, the June twenty-eighth whatever meeting was Kurt was saying how, um, I thought it was a good point that this is, this is about buildings that are greater than five thousand square feet in some places and then thirty-six hundred square feet in tighter lots. Um, so these are already really big buildings, right? So we're, we're, we're giving waivers to people who have already huge big buildings. And I follow up with the fact that some of these buildings are multi-families, right? So you cut a five thousand square foot house into twenty-five-hundred or thirty-six hundred square foot house, well, building into sixteen-hundred square feet. So to allow a waiver for somebody in that situation would then ease the, you know, the, the amount of work and cost that's associated with that. So we're not only talking about big property lots with big buildings. Um, so we're, we're talking about people with maybe a little bit more limited, um, resources. So this is, this is just a relief in some ways to people who might be dealing with that.
So, but the whole thing is regarding whether or not we are waiving the consideration of their site plan according to the, the criteria and standards which are listed in nine-five-seven. Right? And if we're saying that if your house is of a certain size and that you're proposing an increase in size of that house of under a certain amount, we basically are giving you permission to not have to be held accountable to the standards in section nine-five-seven. And I'm not sure I want to say that.
It is, but it has, I think, I just want to confirm though, I think, so that's true as long as it meets all the other requirements, right? There's no, like, it's not encroaching on like, uh, you know, it has to meet all the setback requirements. So you know, I mean, like, as long as it meets all the other zoning requirements, correct? Uh, otherwise, would still require
But it's, that is correct. The, the only reason the waiver exists, or no, the only place the waiver comes into play is if you are, if you meet the size requirement for the lot.
We are really taxing big buildings, basically.
Correct, yeah, I was, I was
Come, come through us if you want to make any adjustments.
Like, for example, it was a four thousand square foot house in the appropriate district and they wanted to put on a five hundred square foot addition, as long as it falls within all the other zoning requirements, they would not need to get site plan review. It's only because the house is already in excess of five thousand square feet in that district.
The building, right, we, yeah, I want to keep emphasizing that we're talking about buildings, so it could be
Correct.
Two different units.
Yep, that's fair.
Right.
Well
So I don't, I don't, so first off, um, I don't be clear in current zoning, you would not it would, it would be a thirty-six hundred square foot in a two families, in a two-unit zone. Cause it's RG six-point-five, which is the only place where you can put in a family. So
But I have a pre-existing condition, right? I, I, I live in the flats, but I am in a two-family that has been built in eighteen ninety.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just, but the, the, um, yes.
I think the, the point you're, DM, is the point you're trying to make is that this is not a tax on big buildings universally because of the RG where the trigger for review is thirty-six hundred square feet. And if it's a duplex, you're talking about two eighteen hundred square feet.
I'm just trying to say that there's a little bit of a nuance there in terms of yes, there are a few multi-unit buildings not in RG six-and-a-half. But the majority of them are, and they would fall under the thirty-six hundred square feet rather than the five thousand. That's all I was trying to say is it's just, I, I just want to bring in that little nuance. But so what I'm getting is that, um, there is no consensus on um, whether or not we should remove the nuclear option or just removing the waiver altogether, that the board seems divided on that. So it will be on the table. I was hoping we could get rid of one of these, but we can't, so.
You know, my, my sense is that that we want to support and strengthen positions in the regs and encourage people to talk with one another. And so in that regard, I, I guess I, I'm, I, I'd want to see more evidence that, that that a size standard is the criterion to go with, um, in this. I, I'm not sure it is.
Well, just, I don't know if everyone has a knowledge of the background for this particular part of the regulations. Uh, this was put in to try to limit the size of new homes being built by saying, if you build it less than this, then you don't have to go through extra hoops through town. And it did have an impact in that we started seeing buildings coming in which were, for instance, just under that limit. So if, I, I don't recall what the L R, but you would see a three-thousand-five-hundred-ninety-nine square foot home and just, so builders putting in new homes said this is an obstacle we don't want to have to deal with. And so the original intent was to try to reduce the size of new homes. And I think that worked in the sense that I don't think we saw as many. Uh, Brian, am I, is, is that your recollection?
Yeah, but I would, I would say that, um, there still are a lot of uh, petitions that come through ZBA that are people that are willing, that are doing, that only require site plan review for large houses because they're realizing um, you say to minimize the houses, but really what, what, what's happening in, in a positive way is that it's making better outcomes, but it's costing these people time and, and, and potentially money to go, to go through it. But I think the end result, I think most people um, you know, it's, it's not necessarily fun, but I think it's a better, what happens is it's a better end result. Um, but it's a question of what do we want to, what do we, you know, the, the question for the board this evening, kind of, in order to scratch out potential options, is should someone, you know, what's the point of this? Who is this helping? The answer is that this is helping the it's helping with this, with the, uh, the smaller lots. So that if they're going over by one square foot, if they're building a, a duplex that's thirty-six oh-one, that they don't have to go to site plan review essentially, if it's a smaller addition. It's a very weird, very small thing, but that's the question you've got to be asking yourself. Who's benefiting from this? Um, you know, that, that's who, in my mind, that's who would be benefiting, the smaller home duplexes. They want to have a decent, decent sized duplex that can totally fit the lot. But first, but because they're amongst other single-family homes, they have, they're kind of brought into the site plan review process. So the question again for the board is whether or not you want to give anybody this type of waiver. If you can't decide that now, that's, I mean, that's a big you know, difference of whether you, someone deserves a waiver. So, um, you know, I'm so
Well, one of the things that happens, Brian, when you, when you walk away from the site plan review option because a homeowner is proposing to make a change that is deemed to be under a trigger, whatever that trigger is, you lose the opportunity to apply all the site plan approval criteria. And for instance, someone could put in a two-hundred-and-fifty, um, square, or three-hundred-square-foot expansion, but it would take out a, you know, a fifteen-inch, two-hundred-year-old oak tree. And we would have no way of, of discussing that with the owner and having them explore options at a time when that kind of a resource is becoming endangered in our town. So I don't favor creating loopholes where people can get out of site plan review where they would otherwise have to be subjected to it.
Okay, so it sounds very clear from your point of view that, that a waiver wouldn't really make sense philosophically for you.
It would not make sense.
Yes, I would, okay, so that, so I think, I think that's clear. I think we should go around. I think we should, like, literally, we like, need to decide this. And we have thirty minutes. And we're not going to solve the problem, but in terms of the philosophy here, we, are we putting this on or not? Does it make sense? There's also, um, political capital to realize, it might be easy to just I, I, I don't, I, I don't know, but we need to think about all that. We have to have, you know, the, uh, thought-provoking discussion now.
Yes, I agree. So I, so we did start, um, so we've got so why don't we do this? We have, why don't we give everyone two minutes? And we'll just go all around and I'll do it in order of the how you appear on my screen. And you have two minutes and what we're going to be discussing is simply do we want a waiver? And you simply say yes or no. And if we can't come to an agreement on whether we all want our waiver or don't want a waiver, then we can't do anything on this. So why don't we, um, start, uh, Yicheng, your hand was raised, so you seem prepared. So go, you've got two minutes.
I would opt for option four, it's, which, which would be the waiver light. Right? Um, so we would maybe restrict certain things about this. But just looking at, um, so, so make it small, small footprint. Um, you know, in, in the side or back or something like that. Um, but also require less less, fewer drawings, um, less investment in, we, we talked about drainage um, with Brian Mantor and that it would have to be required nevertheless, right? And with, and when, um, Richard Leaf spoke too, it was that this currently, when you have to go into this, um, site plan review for the waiver, um, you have to, um, and I'm looking at section nine-four right now. Um, all, the procedure is pretty intense, right? It, you have to give all, all the, all the drawings, um, get the uh, the, the sites, um, engineering stuff, which would cost thousands. And it has to go through, um, the prestige of all of these boards, right? These boards that are not just us, but it seems like there's disability access. Um, there's, uh, you know, which, which would make sense for really big buildings, um, historic resource, um, all of those things. But we could lessen that, that, uh, burden. Um, and then, you know, the, the assumption is that under five hundred square feet or, or less, you wouldn't be taking out a great oak, say, right? Like, these, these, we're talking about smaller buildings. So something, uh, minor site plan review, like LITE, whatever, is gonna be an easier way for people to do this and still go through some of the requirements that we want to see when there is, um, a big building is being adjusted and, um, you know, added on to. And I think that would be, that would be a nice somewhere in the middle, in that we still see it, but it doesn't have to be such a heavy burden on the homeowner.
Okay, thank you. Um, I was trying to put up my clock so you could see how much time you have left, but it's completely useless.
No, I saw your clock.
Yeah, but could you read it? Okay.
Am I allowed to ask a clarifying question of Yicheng or should I wait?
No, no, everyone gets two minutes and then to make their spiel. Um, and Kurt, you seem to be next in my, uh, my window here, so do you have
I don't think I'm ready to give a spiel.
Okay.
So I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass if Nick's ready.
Okay, Nick, are you ready?
Uh, sure. Um, so I guess, as I said, I, you know, I, I'd like, I think that we should be supporting provisions that encourage people to talk with one another. I have mixed feelings about the zoning enforcement officer making these decisions. Cause we have a, we have a body whose purpose it is in function to consider the issues, uh, in their complexity and nuance. I, I think we should, I mean, the zoning enforcement officer is in essence, it's, it's, it's an officer. It's, it's part of the executive branch. And they shouldn't be making or opining on the rules. They should be enforcing rules that the judicial legislative branches uh, come up with. Uh, think of a police officer. I mean, they're not thinking of nuance. They're, they're enforcing rules. I also have a problem. Uh, you know, I think that sort of picking and choosing small sections of the guidelines to change without a review of the contextual material which they are part can lead to mistakes. And so this sort of feels like this is our first step, legislation. It feels like legislating on the fly and, and it just makes me uncomfortable. You know, and, and also giving the authority to the zoning enforcement officer is still giving authority to one person. I, I know it doesn't really solve the one-person problem. I'm not sure that size is a good criterion, uh, because I think that no matter what size it is, we should be talking about these things. And I don't think that we should make assumptions in advance about what might happen, uh, whether there's a tree there or not. So I guess, I mean, do you want me to give my opinion or should I wait till the end?
Do you, no, I, I'd like to know. Or, or do you
I mean, I mean, I, I think if, if we think this is a good use of our time and respectfully a good use of the select board time, then my suggestion would be to remove the waiver altogether. Otherwise, otherwise, I think we should just leave it alone, uh, until we can devote the time necessary to really evaluate the whole.
So I just want to point out that this, the select board has nothing to do with this. This is pure planning board.
Okay.
And I think, um, I think, um, so I, you're, so if you were to, if you were to have an option right now, you would just say leave it as is, is that?
Yes, yes, I, I think, I think that's the responsible position. I, I, I just think we're taking off, we, we're gonna just make this little edit, uh, without looking at the implications or what might happen. Uh, I, and I'm not convinced that sort of size of the, project is, is the criterion.
So that's, that, so that sounds like a very clear vote of option three. This option takes out the entire section. Or, or sorry, you want to leave it alone?
No, 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 I, no, I said, I said only if we think it's a good use of our time, but my, my vote would be to leave.
Nick, this is, this is what you think, not what we think. So I just, so.
Yeah, no, no, I, I think my vote is to leave it alone, uh, and to just, just drop it.
Okay. So, uh, why don't we move on to, um, Sally?
Um, so, um, I, having, having said, that I would be perfectly in favor of taking out the provision of a waiver altogether. Um, I actually would like to understand more about site plan review light. Or, um, as it's described in option four in Brian's memo, minor site plan review, in which only would be required elevation and conceptual drawings, a site plan and drainage calculation if applicable, if one, two, three and four. And so I know, and this is where I wanted to get back to the F A R co- concept. Um, because I think that square feet, um, it's really, it's the size of it or the impact of it is totally depends on the, the building and the site. And so maybe doing it by F A R, um, and, and empowering the zoning board of appeals, to, um, only require certain things, but I see the words site plan in there. And that makes me a little bit more comfortable because it essentially is a site plan review according, that, that allows us to apply the standards of section nine five seven. Um, but they don't have to have such an onerous submission. If we agree on an option for what that, um, if statement number one would be.
So, so my understanding of your position is that you are open to creating, to maintaining a waiver, if it's a, if we have as a si- as a site plan review light.
So I wanna be very clear that, that it's not maintaining a waiver. This is a minor site plan review is instead of a waiver.
I apologize, I apologize, yes.
Brian, thank you for that clarification. That's what I mean.
Yes, I apologize. So, so you are in favor of a reduced burden site plan review.
Yeah, if, if a certain condition is met and I still wanna, um, examine those four conditions and.
There, there might be a lot more conditions. It's more of, uh, again, the, the goal tonight is to decide, what options to, we could, that we need to start really work, or that I need to start really working on based upon a policy direction from the board.
So my statement would be in certain circumstances, it, I'm open to the idea of, the zoning board of appeals requiring a less onerous submission, um, that we have colloquially referred to as site plan review light.
Okay, thank you. Um, Kurt, are you ready or?
Sorry, I didn't, oh, but we're not allowed to ask questions, are we at this point?
I really wanna just get everyone's opinion. So we, so if we had a straw vote, we could go right away.
Okay.
So, so Kurt.
I, I have a quick question for, for Brian, which is, um, Brian's a Kelly, which is, so, what exactly, if we're gonna require in this, light site plan review, conceptual drawings, elevations, site plan and drainage calculations, what are like the onerous requirements that someone's not gonna have to, provide as part of the application?
So I, um, these were just, uh, kind of like throwing everything out there, uh, almost a menu. Uh, so the idea is that we, um, so we, the drainage calculations, it's, it's five hundred square feet. If it reaches five hundred square feet of new impervious, they have to do it. That's based out upon another regulation. Uh, so they can't get away from that, no matter what, whatever it is they're doing. Um, but they don't wanna have to have drainage calculations, you know, keep, uh, reviewing them, I guess. Um, meaning that where the changes, uh, could potentially change those drainage calculations. So it's, it's, it's possible that, the timing of those drainage calculations might not be part of the application, you know, so don't, this is not in stone, I guess is this, is, it is, it's not like if you're voting for four, you're voting for only these four things. It's what we are going to pursue, which is, minor site plan review is, is a potential, it all, that you have to provide less. Um,
So, yeah. I, so I think.
To answer Nick's question a little bit more, if you look at the language in section nine, four, five, it says plans. Um, unless otherwise specified, an applicant for a special permit shall submit a plan in conformance, with the rules of the zoning board of appeals. And the zoning board of appeals recently redid all their forms, which is what people have filled out for each of these petitions that we just reviewed. It's this form two F. And then there's a checklist attached to two F. Dang, where is it? Um, that is the zoning board of appeals saying you have to submit these things. And it would be up to them to come up with a site plan review light if they choose to do that.
Got it. Thanks, Sally. That's actually really helpful. You're right. So I just pulled up the applications one today, for example, and number three is the required attachments. So the point is like.
Yeah, right. So here's all these things, and that answers your question about what's required.
It does.
And, and, um, in a site plan review light, in a minor site plan review, or whatever we decide to call, call it, this checklist might not have as many check marks.
That, e- exactly. That, that, that's kind of the, I, the concept that we would be going towards.
I do want us to be clear that we should talk about the trigger. Um, and I wanted to make sure that I, uh, uh, each thing's past suggestion about F A R.
We are gonna talk about the trigger. I, I do wanna point out that the submission, what goes into the packet is laid out in the zoning bylaws. So we are the ones who ultimately say what goes into the packet. So I think.
Okay, I have to find that then. I'm sorry.
The Z B A follows what's in the zoning bylaws in terms of their forms. So, um, so we, we do get to say, so Kurt, did you wanna, do you, do you?
But my conclusion is just, I would be open to three or four. And my inclination would be, either just to eliminate the concept of the waiver, cause I think we've concluded the waiver is just as onerous as going through the normal process. So what's the point of a waiver? Um, so to me, the waiver as it's written today is like valueless. I think that was what we concluded. So I would either eliminate the waiver altogether. Um, or I would, I would definitely be open to this idea of a, a minor or like a site plan light. Um, but I agree with Sally. I think we'd have to like figure out exactly what we're waving. And again, I think if, if when we compare the list and compare what we still wanna see, if it doesn't feel like we're actually, lightening the load all that much, it begs the question, why even have a site plan light?
Right. And, and, and I do stand corrected, Kurt. You should know that eight, nine, ten, section eight dot nine dot ten, is in the zoning code and that is what the planning board says you need to submit. And it is big and onerous. It goes on, all the way.
Oh, got it, got it. Thank you.
So I'm sorry, Deav, right, and I was wrong about that. Um.
So let me, let me give me, let me get my two minutes in.
Yeah, go for it, yeah.
So then we can jump off. So, um, my concern with, um, so I, I wrote down a bunch of concerns. So first off, uh, anything going through the Z B A is going to essentially put in perhaps a, a minimum of two and probably a maximum around six week delay in a project. So if all you wanna do is put in a, a, a fifty foot, um, arctic entrance or whatever you call it in this part of the country, a mudroom, then the only reason why you're called in for this is because your house is one foot, one square foot over the limit. It adds an extra month to your, your, your time. And that's month is money. So one of my concerns about moving this through the Z B A is that for very small projects, which would probably just get a rubber stamp, all this does is add delay. I think that, um, I am fine with the, I like the idea of the site plan review light. Um, I do think that we have to target smaller projects so that I would be okay going with that if it were, you know, incorporating some of the, uh, each thing's suggestions and reducing the square footage. Um, I do want us to consider, some role for the Z E O. I, I know, the building inspector, the Z E O has to make, decisions on what is or isn't in the zoning all the time. And that's part of their job. So they do interpret the zoning and I think they interpret, they, they probably know it better than anyone. No offense to you, Brian, but, uh, they, they do. So, I, I, I understand your concerns, Nick, about essentially separation of powers or delegation of authority. But I think in this particular case, the Z E O is all, oh, I didn't set my timer, sorry. I think the Z E O is already has a pretty substantial, um, say in the matter. Um, I think this, this is, um, as messy as this is, I think this is how we deal with these parts of the zoning. In that I don't know how, if we take a, a twenty foot step back and say, how does this tie into other things? That we will, we will fail to do some of the smaller things that we can do to move things forward. And I'm just, um, so I, I think this is an appropriate one to look at. So I guess what I'm saying is I go for the site plan review light, um, and moderate some of those conditions or the, the triggers. And that's, that's, that's enough of me. So at this point, uh, we have ten minutes left, I believe, or something like, or is it fifty, twenty-five?
Twenty-five, we have so eight forty-five at the moment.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. So why don't, so I think, um, if I tallied up the votes, I've got like four people who think a site plan review white seems like a reasonable approach. And, um, we've got one vote for just, let's not touch this with the ten foot pole.
Well, you know, I, I guess to the extent that site li- plan review light does advance, the communication that was my primary concern, that it does seem, it does seem interesting.
Okay.
Okay. So I think then, I mean, I think the consensus of the board at this point is that we are going to go forward with the site plan review light.
And it also, it does not change the responsibility that, that I saw as kind of a, a, uh, who's gonna, who's gonna handle the decision making.
Right. I mean, I.
Which is probably a philosophical difference. Um.
Well, no, actually, it, 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 it gives an opportunity to the zoning enforcement officer, to say, based on the conditions in site plan review light, which I hope we don't end up calling it that forever. Um, I'm gonna direct you to take the path of this submission package, not this one. And so the.
That's what the officer would do.
The zoning enforcement officer would say, okay, because these conditions have been met, you can do this submission, not this bigger one.
But I mean, the, the, the body that has the nuance and complex knowledge of these things would be the one.
Yeah, it still goes to the zoning board of appeals, but with a smaller package.
Yeah, I mean.
So it, so it has the benefit of being less onerous, which I think is an important goal. And it also has the benefit of, of, of nevertheless, fostering these communications that, I mean, people aren't gonna do it on their own. And, and I think it's important. I, I think it's one of the points that Richard Leaf made at one of our previous meetings was that, the input of all these groups is, is an important aspect. And it, it contributes in a positive way to the ultimate, uh, outcome.
So I, I, I think then, so, if we're going to do a site, so the question is, is who's this less onerous on? So let's, I think maybe we should start talking about what is the relief that is going to be given. Regardless of what the criteria we use for saying this is, you get to go left and the other person gets to go right. Wha- what, what are the things that we, let's write down what makes us less onerous, getting back to Kurt's question, or his comment about, you know, if we end up doing mostly ninety percent of the same thing, then what's the point?
Right. So you go through that list in section, site plan submission requirements, section eight, nine, ten.
Right. So one of the things that I would question is, how many committees does this have to go through? Is if.
Okay, so that's different. That's in.
I thought that, I thought that we were talking about the forms.
We're talking about the whole procedure.
But the whole procedure, if you guys have your zoning code with you, is, is nine point five, site plan review, right?
Right, right.
So like nine point five point five, this, these things have to go through, these other boards and that the board appeal shell within three days, of receipt, transmit to the conservation commission, the historical commission, disability access, the design review committee and the planning board, two copies of the above application. And then those boards have to report back before they can meet.
So.
So, Deav, I don't think we need to, we need to solve what actually minor site plan review is. I think that, um, you know, this evening. Um, but I, uh, I mean, we don't need to decide exactly all the provisions, but the idea is that, is that, the idea of pursuing something that is less onerous, whatever that might be, um, if, um, so, I mean. It would be us, but.
We, we have twenty minutes in this, left in this discussion. So we either start this process or we put it off and I don't.
Well, so can we, can we go back to, um, option four, it's the list, one, two, three and four. These are the triggers. And this is where I wanted to see E Ching's presentation again about F A R instead of square feet. Is that what it was, E Ching?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, good, I, I, so I'm, I'm gonna be a stick in the mud here and I apologize, but, unless we can show that, our procedures lessen the burden on the applicant, then it doesn't matter what the criteria are.
Well, then it goes back to the submission requirements that are in section eight, nine, ten.
Yeah, I think that unless we, we, I mean, those are the things that concern the applicant. Those are the things that make them upset about coming before us. If we can't make them any less upset than the rest of this is, I mean, we can argue for five or twenty hours on four, five hundred versus four hundred square feet. So.
I think we have an upsetee raising his hand.
Do we? I, I, I've lost sight of all of our guests.
Richard has, he's an upsetee.
Oh, I don't, yeah, I mean, I, I, um, so, Richard, why not, why don't we give you a couple minutes? And then I think the board really has to focus, so. Uh, we can't hear you for some reason. Nope. 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 Uh, maybe if you were to leave the meeting, kill, knock off Zoom, leave the meeting and come back in, that might help. So while Richard's doing that, um, I would suggest we go back to the zoning bylaw and the requirements for submission and we go.
Okay, so that's section eight, nine, ten, right there.
Yeah, and we just say, okay, um, what is it that we want to, what, what, what are we going to lessen? So, um,
Well, so it's really, if you get into the existing conditions part, um, uh, there's certainly, um, you would still want to know.
Elevation, yeah, like topo, topo, um, you know, topo is certainly something that take, that takes time. But really, I mean, what we really would need is, is, I think at the bare minimum, like I said, a site plan and then conceptual drawings, you know, what is this going to look like? Um.
So when you say a site plan, what do you mean by a site plan?
Um.
Does that include topos?
No.
Okay, so a site plan, which is no topos.
With existing trees, it seems like that's an important point.
Okay, so existing vegetation, um, meets and bounds.
And then the plan for the, the existing plans and the proposed plans, the existing elevations and the, and the. The existing elevations and the, and the proposed elevations. And if you remember, Dea, what brought this case to us was this, this guy. Um, I think it was Lorena or something, um, who brought hand drawn drawings to us. And it was too little for some of us, it was fine for some of us, and, and, you know, it was that thing, like it's, it was a little bit of um Goldilocks. Like, how do we, like, too, too much or too little or just right?
I thought it was a church street building that got.
No, it was.
No, it was Lorena.
It was Lorena. And so I think the, the, the understanding that the proponent was simply using some existing. Drawing and, and just modifying it to show us what the difference was.
It's like a napkin sketch, yeah.
Yeah, and the problem I had was simply that I couldn't tell what was happening and had it just been. A napkin sketch without everything behind it, I would have been able to, so we don't wanna force them to go to. An architect. For a small addition, for, for a tiny thing. So Richard, you're back, um, can we try your, your, your audio?
Uh, how about now, can you hear me? All right, now, so I'll, I'll try to be really quick, I really appreciate you even letting me talk for a minute. So. I'm, I'm not gonna comment on, you know, what distinguishes, you know, minor site plan review from. You know, the typical site plan review, but the comment, I think, Dea, that you just made a few minutes ago about. You know, if it is the minor site plan review, that it's less onerous, I think I totally agree with. And the thing, the, the one comment I just wanna kind of leave with all of you. Is about the drainage and the, and the site engineering calculations. That's an extremely owner, extra onerous. Um, burden to put on a homeowner when they're just trying to find out whether they can get a project approved or not. And I, and I, and I think right now there's a disconnect, to be honest with you, with the zoning board, understanding. What, what it actually means for an engineer to come out to somebody's property and drill, you know, drill in the ground and do test. Boreings and then spend, you know, four, five, six thousand dollars on site engineering for drainage. When it's something that somebody would do anyway, but they're just trying to find out whether or not they're gonna get approved. So I would just encourage you as you, as you think about how to make the minor site plan review less onerous. There might be a way to condition it that. Upon approval, the applicant will then provide drainage if it's required that the engineering department. Will approve. Right now, the, the Z B A is kind of asking for drainage all of the time and it's, and it's kind of a really big departure from. The twenty, twenty-five years I've been doing Z B A relief projects, so that, that's, that's the main thing I wanna communicate to, is just how onerous. The drainage is for these, especially for a small project.
So specifically, it's sections four A, four B, four C. Of section um eight, nine, ten.
So the idea would be, I mean, this is great, identifying those things. That can wait until a proper permit application, which would be conditioned on those. Cause nobody, we know that they have to meet. Certain standards anyway, but they don't have to meet those standards when they're going through design review. Or site plan review rather, because, you know, it's the same, you have to meet building code regardless. So the engineering standards, the, so those are the things that. If we can.
So, Dea, just as a point of clarification, the trigger for review is five hundred square feet of new impervious surface.
For stormwater.
Correct.
Right.
Dea, I think that's, that strikes me as progress, what you've just defined there. Uh, I also like the idea of drawings being serviceable and. And good, but not having to come from any pre-approved vendor. Uh, you know, as long as they're, as long as they're good, I don't wanna be making people pay for stuff that they don't have to, unless it's, unless it's necessary.
I think it's, um, historically, most of the people who have. Submitted applications for permits have given us legible drawings. But I recall in the past getting things that were. Amateurish.
Well, if they're very amateurish, that will be reflected in the response they get.
Uh, I think that that's the point where we do have to, you know. We, we would have to set guidelines so that, for instance, the building department would be able to reject an application. As being incomplete.
Right.
Okay.
And so I think that's, so we, so we, we do have to, it has to somehow, we don't need the Picasso, but we don't want the kindergarten. Somewhere in the middle.
No, but I think, I think we're on to something with this last uh stormwater drainage issue. And with the drawings not having to be Picasso. But, but having to be, you know, uh, serviceable and, and good.
So why don't, I think that what would make sense at this point, maybe to. Work through the submission requirements. Trying to identify which ones would be appropriate for a full permit versus. Or a full site plan review versus the, this, um. You gotta call us something other than site plan review light, I agree.
Not to be whatever, but I put minor site plan review.
So minor, minor is good, I apologize, Brian, it's, it's not in front of me, so I forgot it.
So in, in other communities, you actually do, you might have a, a. Uh, major site plan review and a minor site plan review, or you have a minor site plan review and projects of significant impact. Those are kind of the two buzzwords, but you have a major and a minor site.
Let's grab one of those and can we put in the fact that the word storm is misspelled in four B? We have strong drainage.
Can I not leave the stormwater issue for a second? Um, it sounds to me like, uh, what Richard is saying also is that the uh stormwater calculations is. Even onerous for the current site plan review, it's, it's sort of the wrong timing still. Um, and e- even when it comes to us, I don't think that we add anything to that conversation. We let Brian look at it, and I, I can't imagine that the Z B A adds very much to it either, just except to just demand it. Um, so, you know, it's, it doesn't seem like a very valuable thing to do at the permit. Um, getting process.
So that's.
That's also a different conversation, and I, 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 I do agree that for the minor one, we really need to address that head on, but just a note. For us in the future, that is onerous for everyone.
Yeah, I think that that is a, a good conversation to understand if we put that off for some major project, what impact that would have.
Right.
And, and so, yeah, so, so that's.
I think, I think we need to hear from Brian Mantor on that, um, and I really value having Richard Leaf's input on this conversation.
But just to be clear, I don't think any, but I don't think Yiching was recommending or suggesting that we waive it, I think she was just suggesting that like. It may make an approval conditional, conditioned upon satisfactory engineering sign off.
Yeah, I.
So the people don't have to spend the money until they know that's the last step.
I, I agree, I think that, that, that is a, um, we need to take a look. While we're getting to larger projects in which the stormwater management might be such an intricate part, integral part of the design. That leaving it to the end might be a problem, I mean, I think that's where we have to sort of figure out, yeah. But I agree that's something we should look at, I also agree that that's not something, something that we need to worry about exactly now. I think we have a, we have a, we have a, a, a direction right now, which is to come up with a. A set of less onerous submissions. We can review those and then we can all take a couple weeks or however long. And try to think hard about what are the minimal conditions. And um, Yiching, if you, Brian, you, you attached Yiching's drawings to, does it in one of our previous packets?
You know what, I completely lost my drawing, it was a sketch, a true sketch and I just deleted it, but I had something.
Brian, it was attached to something, was it?
I thought it went around in an email.
But, so the current zoning is, um, you know, you, you, it's the same for whichever lot size and whatever zoning, um. Area you are in, and the zoning by proportion would just then scale it to, um, this. Lot, and this was a little bit arbitrary because it was like, you know, an F A R, a point oh four. For this, but at, when it gets big, you know, does it really do point oh four, is there a limit, anyway, but this is sort of just that. That initial thought.
So I think that for our next discussion, which I don't know when it will be, um, we, we will have, I think by then, a. Some, some reduced requirements for submission. And then I think we also have to, then we should be, everyone, maybe what we'll do is we'll schedule it. And then we'll tell everyone to send in your thoughts on what your, um. What the criteria are for triggering the minor site review. And, um, shoot, I just had a thought that I lost, darn it.
Excuse me.
Oh, I just wanna point out that one of our reviews was extended to include. Impacts not just from the public way. And I thought I heard someone say that, you know, we, we, we wanna make sure that the impact is, does not affect what's. Visible from the public ways, but in one of our reviews, and I forget which one it was, we did. Open that up to impacts on neighbors, abutting neighbors. So that is part of our zoning, so if we wanna consider things like, oh, it's in the back, nobody cares about it. Well, one of our reviews says, yeah, the neighbors behind do care about it, so we need to, to, to be considerate or to take that into consideration. Um, so, uh.
So it's nine, five, seven, item number seven, minimize obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations.
Yeah, and I think we amended it somewhere to include, and I forget which one, we, I remember that discussion from a few years ago. Anyway.
Yeah, that doesn't sound familiar.
So we, we only have a few minutes left here and I, I did wanna hear from, um, Brian Mantor about what really the reality of. Um, obviously, when we're talking about very large projects, we're not really talking about minor site plan review, we would engineer it or we would craft it. So that, you know, large projects would not be involved in, in minor cycling review, but, but Brian, do you have any thoughts on? How this works, uh, you know, how this would work on, on some, because sometimes these, these additions are extensive. You know, not all the time, but sometimes they're, you know, they don't trigger any type of, just the drainage, so can you just give some? You know, color to that.
Certainly, yeah, so one of the things we also try to look at in the engineering department is just some of the overall site civil work. Um, size of the driveways, curb pad openings, um, locations of water sewer. Um, that, what they're proposing on installing for the water sewer, if they're make, they're meeting uh D P W standards. Making sure that the applicant would put that on the drawings. Um, so that the contractor will know what they need to do down the road. Believe it or not, there is, it's, happens quite frequently where a contractor may not have the most up to date drawings. And they're using the wrong drawings, that happens more often like, so we try to instill getting the right information on the drawings as quickly as possible. So beyond the site, stormwater stuff, we try to look at other, other things, um. However, with respect to a stormwater light, um, or mi- minor projects, you know, those. Those things always get, they get caught up in the building permit process, so whether you, the plan board decides to. Waive that requirement in the minor site plan review, um, it will get caught in the building permit process. Sometime, you, you know, and when a, a building permit has a Z B A decision attached to it, we review the decision to make sure that the. The standards or the, um, uh, the requirements of the, the Z B A are addressed in the, um, the building permit package. We also compare the, the drawings that were submitted during the Z, you know, the special permit process. To the building permit process to make sure that the building permit drawings that they've supplied are the same. Um, and for, or, or if there's a minor de, minor deviations, but if there's major changes, that that's something that we need to address. Um, and make sure that's not out of the conformance with the Z B A planning. Um, with respect to a larger, uh, like a major site plan review, I think the same things apply, but I think Richard Leaf also makes a good point. That a lot of this work can be challenging for an applicant, especially if they're not familiar with the process. It's a lot of, it's extra time, it's extra money, um, and, um, you know, this. This stuff will eventually get caught in the building permit process, so, you know. Right now, it seems like the, the feeling of the Z B A is that everything gets submitted for a, a ma, you know, what we call a major permit. Irregardless of what the decision's ultimately gonna be. And then with respect to like a major, major project, um, Brian's right that those, those would certainly need to have. Information provided ahead of time, so that, because that, th- this can be part of the project as a whole. Um, and how it can impact, um, downstream utili, you know, town utilities, um, you know, um. Neighbors, uh, if there's easements required or impacts to easements. So, you know, I guess if you were to summarize the light stuff, you know, certainly can get pushed to building permit. The major stuff, you know, right now it seems that the Z B A wants to have that stu, that. Design accompanied with their permit process and the major stuff, it would be a strong recommendation that that stuff is included. You know, irregardless of how the applicant feels about the onerousness of the, the design.
So, like, can, can I, can I suggest i- i- like a case study example or a hypothetical example? Um, as we're encouraging n- new development on North Main Street, for example. Um, if someone wanted to put in a new three family house. That would be one case study, if someone wanted to put in a ten unit building, that would be another example. Um, and, um, maybe we can come up with one or two more, or that's the most, and then decide. Or, or to discuss and explore. Whether what we're proposing is easily, um, identified based on some case examples.
Doug, I, I like that, I really like that, I think that's a great idea.
But now, I don't know if we could have to do that tonight, but I think that that would be an example of what we would move forward and I'd also ask. Um, whether our new counsel can or should have input into this question?
Um, I think that we need to. So there's a separation, I think, between the policy issues that we want to push and whether. And so I think there is a, I, I don't know what the role is, I can't, I can't clearly.
We need to figure out more policy, we need to figure out some more policy first and it, it's possible, it's, you know, the, the last question, we're going a little bit over. The last question I was going to try to talk or to flush out and it might not be able to happen is that. If we can't get this language for minor site plan review done by fall. Do we also wanna contemplate just taking the waiver that's not working anyway out as, as. Or just do nothing and just come back with a replacement at, um, at the time, so that, that's kind of like the last thing to think about is that, um. But it sounds like everyone is coalescing around a minor site plan review.
I think we can do this by the fall, Brian, we just have to focus on it.
What's, what's, just remind me, uh, what the deadline is for the fall.
Um, so September twenty-six, September twenty-six, I believe.
And what, what is gonna happen?
Is June first at the latest.
We could go back to my timeline to town meeting document, it's.
We have to go back to our timeline.
Okay, so it's town, so what I'm trying to get at is, is someone's gotta approve it and that's town meeting, it's not the select board.
No, no, this is, this is our zoning, it all has to go through.
Town meeting approves all zoning changes, the select board does not.
This has to go through town meeting and.
Right.
If we wanna get this done and through legal, so that we can, don't forget, we have to have a hearing. On zoning related items in early September?
Oh, that's like tomorrow.
Yeah, it's pretty much yesterday.
All right, well, so let's draw up a timeline, I'm proposing that we draw up a timeline. That says we have to be, hit, hit these deliverables by these dates in order to bring it to spring town meeting.
We have that timeline, we have to have our language done by early November, it's on your, it's on your schedule.
Okay, let's make.
That's, so that's why, that's why this evening it was important that we kind of decide a, a very strong policy direction. So that we can actually even try to hit a target that's reasonable, so thank you, so thank you, I think we did get there this evening.
And I think, Brian, in terms of whether we, if we can't get it in fall, your question was, do we just remove the current waiver? I think that the answer.
It's a question, yeah.
I think we just simply tell people who want to apply for the waiver. Don't bother, it's a waste of your time, just do the whole thing.
That's what most people do now, according to Brian's Kaylee.
Yeah, I mean, I think that I I think that if they if they have questions about whether the waiver is worth pursuing, they're more than welcome to come and talk to us or talk to Brian or talk to to Al Wile. And he they can get the reality. I don't think we're hurting anyone by leaving it on the books. Because it's not, it's, you know.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I think I can work with engineering and the building department and 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 talk about what we think could be considered less onerous and what that what what that actually looks like and come back with potential options that we could we can continue to debate and refine as we move closer and closer towards Falltown Meeting. And then I think.
And we, oh, to Falltown Meeting?
Spring.
I I spring, sorry.
And we need to be clear on the triggers, the one, two, three, four.
And that's what I think this board will take up next time we meet on this. We will be talking about triggers.
And Brian's going to do research with the.
Can we get some homework questions to to provoke some comments and thought beforehand? I think that we need either need a working group or or.
Well, yeah, I I I I do think that as you as you make any type of changes in any part of the zoning bylaw, you contemplate how it affects others. So the idea of us doing a minor site plan review or, you know, that means that the other thing is the normal site plan review and what do we want for there? It 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 triggers other.
Yeah, because we actually discussed picking out in from the submission.
But so so maybe at the time, maybe at the time that we're looking at at this potentially new process, we would want to try to refine potentially other aspects of of the bylaw. So.
So why don't we do this? So why don't we? If you have any particular homework questions that you can think of right away, send them to Brian. And we'll distribute them prior to the, why don't we, why don't we say that we're not going to meet on this again in August? Let's let's meet on this in September. That will give Brian and Brian and whoever wants to work with the Brian some time to talk about, to understand the reduction in in or or the the reduced submission requirements and maybe to think about Sally's idea of these these charrettes or whatever you want to call them.
Examples.
Case examples to understand how that impacts the engineering requirements, because I I think, Brian, your insight into, you know, what's important from your point of view in making sure things work. And you have a very practical, I think, understanding, a very pragmatic understanding of what's required. So.
And I'd like to invite Richard to participate in the homework assignment. And I I'm not making you do homework. This that's not the point. But but I do think we can put a point on each thing's study questions or what did you call them?
Homework.
Homework questions. One is review section eight point nine point ten site plan submission requirements and identify two things. Things that you would take out of the site plan review submission requirements for projects of a particular type. And things that you would absolutely never take those out for, like, say, Washington Swanton, for example. Number one, and also review section eight, nine, ten for things that you would take out for minor. Right? So the two parts was what would you take out altogether unless it's a really giant job? And what would you take out for minor? And then the second part of the homework would be to go to the the standards, which is section nine, five, seven, and say, no, that that's 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 for the reviewer. But is there anything in the standards that we would want the applicant to not have to concern themselves with if it was a minor?
And then there's also the triggers.
And thank you. Third is the triggers of the minor cycle and review. That's the homework.
Okay, so we will, we will.
And the meeting would be September something.
There would be September something and and I think.
It looks like.
I mean, as we consider this, we'll want to think about or maybe even consult with the ZBA in terms of what they think that they need and then opine as to whether that sounds reasonable to us when we do the the minor site plan review points.
For instance. That's that's a delicate question. And the reason I think it's a delicate question is it comes down to if we consider them part of the judicial branch, how much influence should they have over the legislative branch in terms of putting together? So I I think there's a there's a I don't, I think.
Well, but but we should, we should, I guess, come up with what is reasonable. And and you had touched on that where you don't want to have a napkin drawing. It doesn't have to be a Picasso drawing, but you know, wh- what do we think that they should need?
Well, one thing, one thing would be, do they do the drawings need to be prepared by somebody who was a licensed professional?
And these are all great questions, but we have passed our time to discuss.
Right.
So we will, we will have. Yeah, we will. We will have another meeting on this in September. I think we we've decided on a plan. I think this is very good progress. We are now ten minutes over. So what are we supposed to be doing? Trees working group presentation. Okay, Brian, can you tee us up, please?
Sorry, I just saw. Sorry, the tree working group, sorry. That's where we're at.
That's where we're at, yes.
Yes, sorry. So the tree working group is for we haven't come back to the planning board. This was a, this was a working group idea of the planning board. We reached out to members of the Conservation Commission and the Climate Action Advisory Committee to talk about trees. And and specifically related to three specific points of what the group is trying to do is work with education, educating not only, you know, licensed or really like unlicensed laborers to kind of teach the correct type of landscaping skills around around town, but also to teach homeowners. And another arm, so research, education and legislation. So research is looking at potential things that we can do to learn more about our existing urban canopy and how it can be enhanced. And then potential legislation of what could we could be done about trying to preserve the existing canopy and and enhance it. The group has been meeting for several months, actually close to a year now, I think, something like.
The current incarnation, I think, is almost a year. Yeah, we had a previous incarnation, yeah.
We've had a couple of events. We've hired someone in the visual arts to help with some design and has been a very positive experience with that. There's been groups at the farmer's market. This has been like kind of giving steam. There's about sixty or seventy people on this email list that are interested in caring about the urban forest in Winchester. So we're trying to build somewhat of a coalition of people that want to, you know, that are like minded with no real goal in mind other than preserving, enhancing the canopy. So like everything.
And we have a summer intern.
And we do have a summer intern who's coming up with a a report of potential ideas of what we can, what types of levers that we could pull for in the bylaws around our within our subregion and beyond of other communities, what they're doing with tree tree preservation and permitting and and permitting.
We have a presentation.
Yes, so there's a presentation that has been going around. I need to.
I will, I will, I will do the presenting.
And this is a presentation that is being presented to the select board on the fifteenth of August. Is that correct?
That is correct. We are, we are the dry run. This is the dry run.
Yes, so it's unclear, I think, who is going to be presenting at select board or is there?
According to the minutes that I just distributed, it would be Diab, David Miller and Ruth Trimarky, representing the three boards that are part of the working group.
Yeah, great. So. Do you need me to share to find out and share the screen?
Brian, can I just ask one quick question before you guys go, which is, what is the sort of the goal or the purpose of the presentation to the to the select board? Like, what are we, is the group hoping to get out of the presentation?
The presentat- the it's a essentially letting the letting the select board know what the group is, what its what its plans are, what its purposes are and the challenges. So the idea was to essentially put it on their radar that one of the things we're looking at is language for a town ordinance, which would be increased protection for trees. And also to create, to to make them understand what the issues are. Because this will affect other things that, like, for instance, funding for the DPW trees people. So there are impacts to the town budget in various places. So if we were to proceed with a sort of a an urban forest management plan, which is one of the things we're hoping to get out of this, that will have impacts on a lot of areas that the select board has oversight over. So letting them know ahead of time where we're going.
Okay, so if I had to like rephrase that in like a couple of words, you know, planting the seed for potential future, for a potential future ordinance?
Right.
That's part of it, yes. And and you can go ahead and use as many tree and 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 plant now. Puns if you wish.
Puns.
Puns. So why don't we, why don't we start here? So so the trees working group is was formed, as Brian said, through these these, through the planning board, Conservation Commission and Climate Action Advisory Committee.
Are you going to slide two?
Yeah, to look at. Oh, thank you. It also includes Brian Sekelly as the town planner and our new sustainability director, Ken Pruitt. And it came about because the planning board was very concerned about what we were seeing in terms of clear cutting on properties, as was the Conservation Committee when new development came in, and also the loss of existing trees throughout town. So.
Due to age and disease?
Due to, yes. So there's, I think there's a slide which talks about that, hopefully. So it seems hard. So one of the things that we need to put a value on is what are the values of trees? And so trees provide us with a number of things. They are, they provide shading and cooling for buildings. They mitigate climate change in terms of dealing with carbon dioxide, also dealing with stormwater. Trees are very good at transpiring water out of the ground. They provide mental and physical health benefits just due to their presence and in our mental health. They are a key part of our natural habitat. They provide habitat for animals, and they also provide habitat for plants as well by ameliorating conditions around them. And they are, and they do provide an increase in property values just because they are, they beautify our natural environment. So Brian, next slide, please. So currently, the only trees that have any protection in town are the public shade trees, and that's through a public shade tree bylaw. Trees on private lots are not protected. But they are a key part of our urban forest. They affect conditions on adjoining lots. So a tree on your neighbor's property affects your property, be it through flooding or shade or habitat. We have no control over that, and we see, for instance, when developers come in and they take out smaller properties that instead of and build larger ones, instead of maintaining the existing trees, they typically just level it. And then they may plant some new trees, but they don't make up for the 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 significant loss of habitat and carbon sequestering that mature trees have. We have a very limited public shade tree budget, so even if we're looking at, Brian, I think I'm still back on that slide. So I I forgot about the public trade shade tree budget. So our public, our DPW has a limited number amount of funds to deal with trees replacing existing public shade trees. They can deal with about thirty trees a year. Most of our tree, our public trees are actually reaching end of life because of when they were originally planted. So we are going to start seeing more and more reduction. There are also certain parts of town which, because historical reasons, don't have many shade trees, and they turn out to be the hottest parts of town. And so there is a direct connection between upcoming climate change and heat islands, which will have effect on 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 public health. So one of the things that we hope to get at some point is a survey of our tree canopy to understand where we're at and what we need to do to improve it. So next slide, please. So here are our 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 concerns. So there is no review for removing trees under on private lots. And there are, there are, some of our surrounding communities do have regulations which provide a permitting process or a a penalty if you take down trees of certain sizes. We don't know how well our urban forest is faring. We know we have a pretty decent one, but we don't have a, we don't know, for instance, how well our street trees are doing, what the species distribution is, is that species distribution going to survive our changing climate? How do we make our public trees more resilient? What parts of town need more trees, things like that? As I said before, the DPW is very limited. It does not have a certified arborist. So while we do have experienced people at the DPW, if a tree, a public tree, for instance, is unhealthy but could be saved, we don't necessarily call out to a certified arborist to come in and do a more detailed analysis.
Yeah, they might instead just take it down.
Yeah, and and it really depends a lot on terms of if the DPW sees trees or ill or or diseased trees as a health and safety issue, then you're more, and it always is, but if they see that they might choose to take it down rather than try to bring it back to better health. So there's always, and there's a cost benefit analysis. One of the things is that we have noticed in our discussions with people is that people really see trees as part of their community. Even if it's not on their property at our various, when we were at town day or at town at the farmer's market, people are coming up and telling us about the trees that were taken down on their neighbor's property or down the road. So people feel a very personal connection to the trees around them, even if they're not on their property. And in some parts of town, the street trees are really private trees, and people see that as they walk by. It becomes part of their neighborhood. So we see a lot of concern about that. Next slide, please. I forget how long this is. I think it's only supposed to be ten minutes.
It's twelve slides.
It's twelve slides, so it should only be ten minutes. Fuck, I'm losing on that one. So what is the vision we want to have of Winchester? And this is something that I think needs to be embodied in whichever we go forward, is where do we see Winchester's urban forest? And so we like to think of the urban forest as this unifying concept. It it encompasses both the private and the public trees. It's part of our shared urban environment. It's an indication of the ecological health of our community. And the working group's primary goal is preservation and enhancement because we have to not only make up for the trees we're losing, but we have to prepare for a much more significant loss with climate change. Next slide, please. Okay, so I think the the objective goals that we have is to come up with the urban forest management plan, which encompasses not just the public trees, but also the town forests and and the private lands, which is where the bulk of our trees are, and to treat them as a whole ecosystem. We want to make sure that this management plan actually is rooted in a structure within town government which is sustainable over the long term. So it's not just something where we start it up and then it fails. We need, this has to be incorporated into how we do the DPW, how we do zoning, everything. We have to look at how do we maintain it. So this really spreads out into a lot of different areas. And the other thing that we're looking at is, we've done a lot of research into what are appropriate municipal bylaws which would protect trees and still, so there's always this tension between private property rights and community rights. And trees are the strange thing which kind of straddles those because they may be on your land, but they're certainly part of someone else's ecosystem. So we have looked at a lot of different bylaws from towns, not just around us, but also in California, other parts of the East Coast, trying to understand what incentives you can provide to people so that they will prefer to save trees, incentives to plant trees. And so there's a carrot and stick thing that we're still working on. Also, you know, we may want to say, let's just manage trees in setbacks. So that if, you know, so that's just an area that we know affects more than one property. But you also might want to say, if you have a tree, which is maybe in the middle of your property, but it's a forty eight inch two hundred year old tree, there is something special, and those are. two hundred year old tree, there is something special, and those are technically old specimen trees, and we might want to consider how we provide them some protection. Next slide please. So um, as Brian pointed out, the tree working group meets uh, pretty much bi-weekly. We've been meeting this particular incarnation since I think late last fall. Um, we've been at the town, we had a great um, presentation at town day. We were at the farmer's market regularly. Um, we have collected seventy-some people who are very interested. We have a uh, high school intern who is working on collecting um, samples of bylaws so that we can get a palette, so we can understand. He's putting it together in a report. We have someone who is really interested in helping us with social media in terms of spreading this message and trying to create a, a grassroots and sustainable effort to make sure this keeps going.
And I just want to add that the, the tree working group, um, tree booth will be at this Saturday's town um, uh, farmer's market. And um, I'll be there and I want to see everybody on the planning board swing by for five minutes.
It's always fun to talk about trees. Um, next, next slide please. I think we might, okay, so this comes to the conclusions. Um, trees are a shared resource. We do not view it as such when we look at how we manage our urban forest. It's, it's very fragmented. It cannot maintain itself without our help. Um, we need to provide mechanisms and we need to steward what we have. Um, we need to understand what we have now so that we can cre- create metrics. So we can tell what we're losing, what we're gaining and where that is. Um, we have done some work, we've done some work, for instance, of looking at aerial photos over the last twenty or thirty years. And it's pretty interesting where you see big chunks of trees disappear. Um, we have to do something about large scale clear cutting on newly developed lots. I think that's a much easier thing to work on than dealing with um, existing homeowners. If it is part of a development process and someone doesn't come in and raise a house and remove all of the trees, then we can do something there. And we know that a lot of people in town are very concerned about the future of the trees. And um, we know there's a lot of support. And so.
And I would just add one data point to um, Diab's um, mentioning that there's anecdotal support for this from people who have talked to the group. And that is that some anecdotal support comes from people whose properties have been flooded, that have never flooded before because they are downhill of a site that was clear cut by a developer.
Yeah. So um, that is the uh, the tree working group, and that's, that's our presentation. Um, any questions? Oh, I should point out that eventually, if we come to having some sort of regulation, the idea is that we would bring it, someone has to sponsor the, the, the ordinance that goes before town meeting. And so the, the hope would be that this working group would get the support of the planning board and the conservation commission, which I think are the ones which could.
And the climate action advisory committee.
Right. The climate action advisory committee is, is, is an advisory committee, so they are, are na- I don't know that they can bring this before town meeting on their own. The, the COMCOM and the planning board would. So at some point, we, the, the working group would be coming back with specific language to the planning board. Um, we are attempting, we are looking at getting something before spring town meeting. So that means we would be looking at language probably um, mid-October that we would start circulating for review. And we, we recognize that working with two committees is going to be an interesting way of navigating, cause I'm sure the COMCOM has different concerns than we do. But anyway, so that's.
Yeah, this, this sounds really exciting to me. Uh, all this progress that you guys have made on it, uh, in terms of defining the problem and uh, thinking about actually uh, putting something together. And also the, the committee, it's, it's, it sounds like, it's like it's a diverse committee talking together on a common problem. Uh, and that sounds good to me as well.
Excellent, thank you. Yeah, it's, it's, it's one of those um, very non-controversial committees, because everyone loves trees on the committee, so.
Well, it's a self-selecting group of tree lovers.
Yes, yes.
I always felt that way because nobody liked architects and always, I, I always wanted to be a landscape architect. You give them the fees and I was like, oh yeah, we'll pay you that much money to put trees and plants in, but not much money to put in a, you know.
No, it's not.
I didn't, I didn't realize that no one liked architects, but.
We, you know, the, the neighbors don't like it.
Architects are much less reviled than lawyers.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, there's the, the stereotyping.
Real estate agents, but. So.
You've gone from architect to real estate agent.
That is bump, status drop. Um, so my comments are, good, um, good job on spending the money on graphics. I mean, that, the first graphic was awesome. I really liked the little icons near the trees. Um, two, I, I think that in general, it's, it's an idea that trees are good. But I, I do wonder because, you know, not all trees are good in some ways. Like every property they have been in have had Norway maples. And you know, they, they are weak, they take, you know, they take away the bottom canopy. And whenever we have to take them down, people are like, what? They're like two hundred year old trees, but they're really fifty year old, you know, junk trees. So I, I would say, you know, like, forest management isn't, is a big issue. Like, what, what do we do about trees that are not good for the environment? Um, that really do cause chaos. Um, and you know, should we be planting more natives or something like that, right? A little more like, how do we get it to be a more healthy environment? Rather than just accept that all good, all living things are good. They're not.
And that's a big part of what the education objectives are. Um, the education um, audiences are homeowners, contractors, builders, um, policymakers, um, like us. Which trees would we deem desirable versus not, et cetera? So that's a big part of the education part.
Yeah, and that's, that, that, that exact discussion has we've had that several times in trying to understand how we, so for instance, good news is Norway maples are illegal to plant, so no new ones. Um, but.
Kill that to the seeds.
Yes. Well, I have a beautiful Norway maple in my backyard, which I'm not taking down because it shades my house right now.
Yeah.
But, uh, but there, there is a question, like for instance, when the DPW plants street trees, we talked about having a palette of trees which they could choose from. And where, so these are things the DPW now goes to Mahoney's and takes whatever trees are available. So they do try to take native trees that are at least been grown in this, in New England, so it will survive the weather. And they do try to take native trees and they're shying away from some of the poor choices. But the, the, the palette of trees might be smaller than is possible. So that is one thing that we really are, we want to provide that guidance.
Um, right, right.
And, and so that's the part of, I mean, the DPW is, you know, they have, you know, got a tree warden, which is the, the head of the DPW, but the assistant tree warden, um, Jim Shattuck is one who does, he's, he's the one who really does the work and he's only spends thirty percent of his time on it.
Because he's also responsible for the cemetery.
Yeah, so there's a.
Seventy-five acres of land.
So there's a, there's a question of resources and part of the education is make, is getting people to understand that we need to put more resources into this. And so, um, I mean, we have this vision of, you know, education for homeowners, education for landscapers and contractors. Um, enough support for the DPW, setting up a, a tree committee, which is not a public tree committee as it is right now, but a tree committee which would help set policy, create the urban forest management program, bring in some real science-based metrics, so that we have this long-term plan. And that, you know, that's the vision.
And, and also work with the sustainability department and the planning department on grant applications, because there's an increasing amount of grant money out there for tree-related projects in municipalities because of climate change. So that's another whole big reason.
I, I do um, appreciate the sort of more conservation part of that, this group. But I, you mentioned um, the heat islands and the, the historical, you know, inequities in, you know, the, so, sort of the the cl- the, what do you call it? Env- environmental justice part of it. Will, I would, I would love to see more of that here, you know, in, in terms of like, hey, how do we proactively now start to address those wrongs done by, you know, um, redlining or whatever.
One of the ways that towns do that is they take a very careful inventory of all the existing, let's just stick to street trees. You can do also trees within setback, but let's just bite off only what we can true, true. And it, and it will very immediately reveal A, that most of our trees are really big, beautiful trees that were planted in the eighteen nineties, as Diab said, are on the last legs of their life or approaching that. And that B, certain parts of town have never had very many trees planted.
Right, so you want to see a list of priorities of which part of town we need to address, because it, it all, it all needs to be addressed. But what, what parts of town have been um, the least resourced?
And we have a huge opportunity to address that with our North Main Street work.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I should note that one of the people who's been working with us a lot is Peter Wild of Boston Tree Preservation, who has an amazing knowledge of trees and is very much into, um, I don't know if you knew this, but he, they, Boston Tree Preservation sold all of their pruning trucks and all their big equipment. And they focus only on tree health right now, um, because he was so concerned about the direction he saw the arborist community moving into. So his, and so we've had an amazing amount of help from him and understanding um, what is possible. And so, so yeah.
I want to thank Bri- Brian Manter, because you have been the recent advocate of maintaining Winchester's designation with the Arbor Day Foundation as a Tree City USA. And you've been sending in the yearly reports on the activities of the DPW with regards to removals and replacements. Um, we have a, we have very tenuous qualifications as a Tree City USA. Um, and I would like it to be a goal that our qualification for that designation is resounding, not tenuous.
Thank you, Sally. Yes, I appreciate that. And if the planning board doesn't mind, I sent myself a reminder to send you some a quick blurb on our status of Tree City USA. So maybe if you decide to choose, you could include that in your, your presentation.
That's a good idea, because I'm sure the select board is aware of that designation.
Please, please send that to, uh, send it to why don't you send it, yeah, send it to the planning board. I'll pass it on to David Miller, who I, who had.
And Ken, Ken's also working on the slides.
Yeah. Oh, it's good, yeah, I, well, David's the guy with the, he's got the master copy, so.
Okay, good. I defer.
I will, I will pass it on to the trees group, so, yeah.
Okay, so yay, Brian Manter.
Yes, um, and Brian was, was, was trying to get us to get free, free trees to give away at, at town day. Unfortunately, we missed, we missed our deadline. But that was one of the things.
There's more town days.
There was more town days. We were going to give away, was it a hundred and fifty trees celebrating a hundred and fifty Arbor Days or something like that?
It, it was an ambitious goal. Um, but then in chatting with DPW and the working committee, you realize that there's more to just handing out trees.
Right, because a little seedlings can die in a cup on the kitchen ca- table and there has to be a larger infrastructure of care.
Absolutely.
It's, it's remarkably expensive to plant a tree and keep it going for the first couple of years, so.
So the adage is the first year it sleeps, the second year it creeps, and the third year it leaps. And to that point, one of the suggestions I have for our zoning bylaw revisions is to put a longer threshold on releasing payments to subdivision developers with regards to are the trees going to survive?
That is, that is an appropriate thing when we review. How do we, how do we manage our new trees? Yes. Um, so I want to uh, thank you for your patience and uh, we are approaching um, the end of our meeting. Uh, we have action items to discuss. So let's talk about our action items. So um, what I get is, I think our biggest action items came from our discussion of the site plan review waiver, which we are now going to be calling the minor site plan review. And uh, the action that I recall was that, uh, I think the Bryans will, will be taking a look at some of the requirements for um, engine, from engineering's perspective and into what is, what could appropriately be removed from minor site plan review. And also, um, Brian and I and somebody else if they wants to join in, will take a look at the documentation requirements to see what's really and may, and come up with something along those lines of reducing the burden of those. Uh, we'll be meeting again in September and prior to that, we'll be sending out homework questions. So that's another action item. And then uh, the only other action item I would think is Brian Manter gave himself one to send his Arbor Day um, submission stuff to me and I will pass it on to the trees group.
And I have an action request to come to the farmer's market on Saturday.
Yes, it will be cooler.
Yes.
So. I am sending the scope of the former place to the master, to the planning board. And I'm also looking into the updating the website for the North Main Street, Old Main Street.
I couldn't hear you very well, Brian.
Yeah, Brian, you're, you're really low.
Nope. I haven't done anything.
Well, just pipe up a little.
Okay, I can, I can, I can certainly pipe up.
Would you repeat that, please?
Sure. The two things that I had were to send the scope from former place to the planning board and then to um, update the website for uh, the IL as well as North Main Street. Just making sure that those are all updated.
Oh, and there was that link I was telling you doesn't work.
Yeah.
For Holton, yeah.
Okay, um, I think that those are all of the action items.
Richard Leaf, why do you look perplexed? Not, okay.
He's good. Okay, uh, well then, um, just to celebrate the fact that we're done before nine thirty, I would welcome a uh, a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. She's like pulling teeth. Um, roll call, I Ching.
Hi.
Kurt.
Hi.
Nick.
Hi.
Sally.
Hi.
And I say hi as well. Thank you to uh, our recording secretary, Nancy Polkari, for sticking around. Uh, to Richard Rohan for joining us, for Richard Leaf for joining us, to Brian Manter, Assistant Town Engineer, Brian Zekely. What are you today? You're the town planner today. And to everyone out there in TV land, we will see you in two weeks.
Oh yeah, what's the date?
Whatever two weeks from today is, I think.
Brian Zekely, is it?
No, no, sorry, a mistake. We meet, we meet next week. We meet August sixteenth. This is when we're going to be talking about the three house subdivision. Uh, you need to review this, so um, that is a, that it was already in your packet.
That's the Rocky Ledge Terrace.
Rocky Ledge Terrace. That is the next week.
That would be on the sixth of September?
No, that's next week.
It's uh, sixteen? Hold on. So, right, so we meet on the sixteenth, but then we don't meet again until, correct, until September sixth.
Okay.
Okay, so we will see you all next week.
Next week.
Apologies.
That's great.
Weekend, enjoy the cool weather and stay safe.
Cool.
Everyone, take care.
Bye.